This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Finally, we got our technical difficulties resolved, I hope, and we welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 17th, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 70E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comments are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us. We will now begin the meeting with a call to order. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please? Pardon me? Yes, roll call, please.
From here? Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
I know, sorry.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Kreschel.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toronto.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dolstrand. Director Dolstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Menzer.
Here.
Deputy Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Emily. As I say the pledge, I invite you to say it along with me silently. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first thing on the agenda tonight is to thank everyone for participating in the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. The Ninth Annual Mayor's Fitness Challenge was held from May 10th through July 4th this year and was a great success despite the coronavirus pandemic. This year, we had 54 participants with 40 completing the challenge to log in 1,200 minutes of physical activity in eight weeks. Twelve participants managed to beat the mayor's minutes with totals over 3,795, which was my total. The special award winners this year who will get a certificate in the different categories, Debbie Landberg had 10,317 total minutes. She qualified for the most minutes overall for a female and the most minutes for a female over 51 years of age. Our very own Lori Brenner with 5,145 total minutes qualified for most minutes overall for a male and most minutes for a male over 51 years of age. Lisa Cortez with 2,885 total minutes qualified for most minutes for a female 35 through 50 years of age. And Ben Merrill with 4,713 total minutes qualified for most minutes for a male 35 to 50 years of age. And finally, Ellen Seberlich with 5,193 total minutes qualified for most minutes for a female under 35 years of age. So congratulations to all the participants and special award winners. The city would also like to thank Northwestern Medicine for their generous sponsorship by donating funds for the T-shirts. Participants will be notified by email when the T-shirts come in, and they're due shortly. Due to the pandemic, a group photo of all participants is not possible this year, but we'd like to thank everyone that did participate. Also, just the reminder that remains necessary because of the times that we're in, please continue to follow the safety guidelines for the prevention and spread of COVID-19 by, one, wearing a mask in public, two, washing your hands frequently, and three, being aware of the need for social distancing. And a reminder to those at the meeting tonight, following the meeting, members of the public who are in attendance can exit using the emergency exit doors on the northeast side of the council chambers. And that's all I have for this evening. We will now hear any verbal or written comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please announce yourself with your name and address. Please speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. Once we have everyone wishing to speak, I will call on you one by one to proceed with your comments. Email comments will be read aloud following the verbal comments. We have one person who is here tonight in person, that's Mr. Bob Seibert. So Bob, you're up.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. In 1986, the City of Warrenville created a strategic plan for the development that would benefit the then-current taxpayers and also the future taxpayers. The business, office, and industrial zoning were chosen because they presented the greatest revenue benefit to the taxpayers. The city knew that the completion of this plan could take 50 or more years, but would outline a specific location and zoning for the development. Many times, I have heard in this room that Warrenville's TIF number one is the best in the state of Illinois. So I was somewhat surprised when the City of Warrenville downgraded the zoning in the TIF number one to high-density residential after only 34 years. Such actions greatly diminish or even could eliminate the gains to future taxpayers as planned by the city council in 1986. And now we see not one, but two developmental proposals three blocks away in the $200 to $300 million range. Unfortunately, they are in the city of Naperville.
Is that it, Bob?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have any phone-in? No phone-in? Any phone-in comments at this point for citizens' comments? Okay, any emails? Okay, we'll conclude then. Public comment. Once we conclude citizens' comments, there will not be another opportunity for the public to comment at this meeting. We'll move on to official and staff comments. I made my big one at the beginning, acknowledging the success of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge and reminding everyone to stay safe and healthy. That's all that I have to add for this evening. Clerk, do you have anything? Thank you, Treasurer.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll start again with Alderman Ashauer.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No comment at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
No comment tonight, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that before we have our next city council meeting, the school district will be starting up again. I know that the school district reopening plans have changed, and there's more information on the District 200 website, but it does seem that learning is going to start September 1st, 2nd, or 3rd for different grades, even though older students are going to be at least to start doing more learning later. So, as can any younger students if the parents wish. The details are changing frequently, and I just want to wish the school district and all of our parents, kids, and teachers the best with this challenging situation as they find ways to keep their families safe during this difficult time. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
Just to mention that I received my letter from the city today regarding the aggregate program and several of the residents have contacted them. So I'd like to remind staff that we'd like to get that posted on our social media outlets so that residents, maybe some links that if they had questions, they could follow the links for more information.
Okay, it has been posted, I understand. So, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
No comment.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
Thank you, City Administrator.
Thank you. Two quick things. First, Assistant City Administrator Christina White sent out an email late this afternoon with some supplemental information about Agenda Item 7C, the coffee con information. So you have more information about the original grant and hotel tax information. Secondly, I'll just reiterate what Mayor Bremel said earlier. Just a reminder, pass on our request from the DuPage County Health Department, please everyone, follow all the COVID-19 guidelines. Our state is struggling as a whole state to keep our numbers, infections, and all down, and it's incumbent on every one of us to take care of ourselves, our friends, our neighbors, our families. We're not just helping with protect the health and safety and lives of other people, but if you really think about it, we're protecting jobs and businesses as well in our community, and that's all important, every one of those items. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney Brooke?
No comment.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion? Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda for the August 17th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second.
A motion and a second. Does anyone have any changes to make to the agenda this evening? Please speak up.
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
I have a question on 6A and 6F.
Okay, so you would like to take those off of the consent agenda?
Unless you can answer my questions now, that's fine with me.
I'm sorry? Okay, we'll pull them off the consenta and we'll talk about them separately. That was A and what was the other one, sir?
F.
A and F?
For the record, Alderman Widener agrees.
Okay. And the second, Alderman Davalos, do you agree to the changes?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the consent agenda as amended. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The motion carries, and the agenda as amended has been approved. We have two sets of minutes that need approval also this evening. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Regular Meeting.
Second by Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second. Does anyone have any comment or question on the minutes? Please identify yourself and speak up.
Alderman Kreschel, I have one clarification or change.
Okay.
August 3rd, City Council Meeting, under Regular Agenda, Item A, the discussion regarding the 53 out of 55 delinquent water and sewer services were disconnected. I just want that to reflect, we didn't actually disconnect any, those were actually paid.
Okay. Motioner and seconder agree to that change to the minutes?
Motioner agree.
Alderman Davalos agrees, second.
Okay.
Mayor, I need to check. Mayor, I need to speak in on that.
Okay.
Finance Director Dolstrand, there were some of those that during the process were turned off, but as a result of those turnoffs, did make their payments. There were some actually turned off.
Okay, so there's a clarif-
I already sent an edit to the clerk about this item. I believe that they were disconnected, but 53 out of 55 were reconnected. So, I've sent corrected language to the clerk about this, and hopefully she can include that in the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we good then? Alderman Kreschel? Yep, I see you nodding. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, then may I have a roll call for the approval of the minutes, please?
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Very good. The consent agenda then, as amended for this evening, reads, Item 6B, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Approve Ordinance O2020-31, Authorizing a 10% Water Rate Increase and a 10% Sewer Rate Increase Effective September 1st, 2020. C, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2020-48, Extending the Duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular special or emergency meeting of the city council. D, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2020-49, Approving an Access, Indemnity, and Release Agreement with EZBP Warrenville LLC and Thornton's LLC-Illinois. E, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2020-50, Approving a Professional Services Agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for the West 2 and 3 Basins Manhole Rehabilitation in the Amount of $54,382. G, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Assign Alderman Ashauer and Bavir to Work with Staff and Property Owners to Develop Recommendations for Consideration at a Future Committee of the Whole Meeting, excuse me, Regarding the Future Ownership and Maintenance of Riggy Road and Barclay Avenue. H, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Approve Affiliate Membership in Ride, Illinois for the City of Warrenville and the BPAC attendance at Ride, Illinois 2020 Virtual Bike Summit. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Regular Meeting Held on June 23rd, 2020. A, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission's Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Held on August 6th, 2020. K, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to August 12th, 2020 in the Amount of $92,732.85. L, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before September 8th, 2020 in the Amount of $758,704.24. And M, Receive and File Report of Master Debit Card Expenditures for the Month of July, 2020 in the Amount of $3,161.49. May I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Alderman Widener, approve the agenda as presented by David Bremel.
Second by Alderman Davalos.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries, and revised consent agenda has been approved for this evening. We will now return to Item 6A. Alderman Wilson, did you wish to bring that forward, or did you wish to have someone else?
I prefer someone else, please.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion, please, and then I have a second?
Ms. Alderman Goodman, I will make a motion to accept the Plan Commission recommendation, waive the second reading, and pass ordinance O2020-30, approving the temporary use permit for to the next level to operate a food cart in the parking lot at 2 South 781 Route 59, Unit A in 2020 through 2022.
Second, Alderman Ashauer.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go to discussion. Alderman Wilson?
Okay. My question has to do with the Exhibit B that we have on this food chart. So, if you look on Exhibit B, Page 5, I just had a question because it states up there that... Am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Okay, it says it's open at 10:00 a.m. until sold out Monday through Friday, comma, day or five days a week. Now, does that mean they could open on Sundays and Mondays or Thursdays? Or, I don't understand that two phrase there. They can open Monday through Friday or five days a week. Can you clarify that?
Okay. Who was in a position to make that clarification? Economic and... Community and Economic Development Director Menzer, please?
Good evening. Thank you. Based on the testimony that the applicant provided at the Plan Commission public hearing, I think the intent is that it would be operated Monday through Friday. That being said, the Plan Commission did not specifically request a condition to be added to their recommendation to limit it to a Monday to Friday operation. So as the ordinance is currently drafted and in your package, they would have the applicant would have the flexibility to be open on the weekends if they so chose. The applicants are on the call, you might say, this evening and could probably address more specifically what their intent is.
Okay. Would someone please identify themselves and give some commentary here, please?
Sure, I'm Mike Dusek. I'll be operating the car. And we really don't have a set time. We're going to try that out. 10 to 2 looks good for a lunchtime. Maybe go after a lunchtime. Mondays might not work if it's a slow day. We'll take that one out, maybe for prep. So we really don't know what will be the best times. It might be a dinner, you know. I really can't answer that. We're going to start with what was stated there. Try opening at 10 and after a lunch crowd and see how the community likes it. Maybe have a little longer day if it fit in demand. If there's a Saturday event produced for us, we'd like to make money and look good for the community while doing so, then I'll let it out on a Saturday.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Tony, do you have any comment? Tony Gallagher, are you there?
Yep. No, I'm all good. That's pretty much, pretty much it. It's kind of trial and error right now on days and trying to get the ball rolling. I kind of see where it goes from there.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wilson, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess it does. If they mean they're going to be open for a maximum of five days a week, the days a week may vary, but it's still just limited to five days a week? That's my question.
Okay. This is Community and Economic Development Director Menzer again. That's... If that is the desire of the city council to limit it to five days, then there would need to be an amendment made to the ordinance to add that limitation. The Plan Commission's staff specifically recommend that there be a limit on the number of days.
Okay, so they would be free to have the five days, whichever day of the week they chose. I agree with that, if that's their choice.
They would have quite a bit of flexibility. They could actually, under the current structure of the ordinance that's in your agenda packet, they could operate and be in compliance of those provisions of that ordinance up to seven days a week. I don't think that's their intent, or at least not initially, but I would imagine if, you know, that this turned out that that would be something that would be supported by the community, I think they consider doing that. So, the ordinance gives them some, quite a bit of flexibility in the hours and the days of operation to try to make sure that they're satisfying whatever demand might involve in the community.
Okay, that explains it to me. The other aspect would be the 10 o'clock in the morning thing, since they're also thinking about offering breakfast in the future. So, the 10 o'clock in the morning would not necessarily be the earliest starting time if they're going to start having breakfast. So, the same flexibility would apply?
Yes, that's correct, the way the ordinance is written.
Okay. All right, the other question I have on there, they also indicate that in the future, they may be able to move the truck to soccer games and other areas in the city where the, they mentioned soccer games and baseball games or things like that. Does that same space availability that they have gotten here for this one spot, does that change then? If they choose to move the truck to a soccer game or to some sort of other location? It seems to me the whole thing was an approval for that location specifically on Route 59. So, my just question is, is it flexible enough that they can move it back and forth?
The approval that is reflected in the ordinance in your agenda packet would limit them to the site on Route 59. If they were to come back and look to provide this type of service at some other location in the community, they would, and if you go through some type of additional approval process and amendment to the current approval, maybe a new approval, you know, there might be some dis- from the city's perspective to formalize food truck slash food cart regulation or a specific manner than you're currently addressing going forward, somewhat based on the experience that we have with this particular use at the shopping center. At this point in time, they would be limited to that shopping center on the approval that's before.
Okay, the only other question is this, annual reapproval or the duration of the approval? Is it on an annual basis?
Yeah, the way it's, the ordinance is structured, it would be for this summer, next, or for this year, next year, and the following year. And I think after that, they would need to go back through the approval process.
Okay, thank you very much. You've answered all the questions I had, so I'm...
Alderman, we'll give the other Alderman a chance to weigh in on this if they choose to do so, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
No questions, but it sounds like a very fun, a fun thing to do, so I'm kind of excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, my only question is how soon can we taste the brisket? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
No questions, thank you.
And Alderman Widener?
No questions, thank you.
Very good. May I have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. Hope it works out.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item 6F now. Alderman Wilson, did you wish to bring that forward or have someone else do it?
I would appreciate someone to do that for me.
Okay, someone please.
Alderman Goodman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R 2020 dash 51, approving the contract extension with Chrisell Maintenance Services for two years to October 31st, 2022.
Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and we'll start our discussion again with Alderman Wilson.
Okay, thank you. My question just has to do with the fifth whereas in the contract. It indicates a total annual budget not to exceed $35,820 per year. However, if you look at the Capital Maintenance Service Corporation final page, they list the total cost annually and it's $52,260. My question is which one of those is more accurate?
Okay. See, the administrator is looking at that? No? And Christina White, Assistant City Administrator, can you help us out on this question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the normal contract amount is going to be the $35,820 for the two-year extension. The $52,000 number is reflective of five days a week per cleaning, which is what we're doing right now because of COVID. That is a temporary arrangement. We do not anticipate having five days a week of cleaning permanently. So I'm going to ask City Attorney Lenhaman to chime in here in terms of how the resolution is written. Do we need to amend that not to exceed amount to reflect the temporary additional cleaning? Or is that sufficient as written since that is the intent for the long-term contract? I'm muting myself here. I'm, hold on one second. I'm reviewing the documents. Just making sure that the actual contract is accurate. The resolution. We can do. I apologize. I'm waiting for my computer to. It can be approved amendment to clarify that the not to exceed amount is $35,820, but $52,000 a year while the city includes the five days a week for as long as that occurs. We can include the monthly. I think it's probably better to include the monthly amount because it may not be an entire year that you're using the extra services. So it would be, we can clarify those amounts in the resolution. So we can make an amendment, floor amendment. Christina, is there a way that the city is going to be when you will use those extra services and when you won't? Or is it just at the city's discretion? Right now, we've been operating at the city's discretion with, because of COVID. So at this point, we anticipate using the additional five days of cleaning at the end of the calendar year, depending on how COVID progresses or where we are at that point in time. We may need to extend it further. Okay, so I recommend amending the resolution to include the not to exceed monthly amount in the amount of $4,355 per month, which is for five days a week cleaning or $2,985 if the city desires to reduce the cleaning as proposed.
Okay. Do the motioner and the seconder agree to that amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That sounds like we're good. I'll go through the Alderman again to see if we have any other additional comments. Thank you, Brooke. Alderman Ashower.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Bavir.
No further comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Chrisell.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Widener.
No comment. Thank you.
And Alderman Wilson, any additional comments?
No, other than thank you very much for clarifying it. It was just two different figures that didn't seem to match. So thank you very much for being able to take care of it and I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. All right, we will go now for a roll call.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Financial update.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry. Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The motion carries. We'll go into our regular agenda now. Will someone please make the motion for item 7A?
Alderman Berry, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R 2020 dash 52, approving the adoption of the Illinois Association of Chief of Police and the NACP Illinois State Conference.
Second, Alderman Bavir.
Hey, we have a motion and a second maybe to start the discussion. Chief Toronto, could you give us a rundown on exactly what this means for us?
Certainly, Mayor. These are the standards of law enforcement that we are, we consider to be the best practices that have been crystallized into writing. They've been adopted by 278 communities in the state of Illinois. With tonight's action, Warrenville would be added to that list. This is something that we have trained on even without the formal type of adoption of these principles and that our policies and procedures are set up upon. So it's something that we already do, but I felt it would be a good idea if we formalized this action with a resolution and presentation to the city council. That being the shared principles and also the proposed resolution are included in your backup materials. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Chief. This looks to me like a good thing for us to do and I appreciate your bringing it forward. We'll go to the Alderman for comments. Alderman Ashower.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
This does look like something that's good. I'm glad we're going to be signing this. So I approve.
Thank you. Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I, I'm glad that we're going to be signing also. I just want to make a comment that the definition of community policing, you hear that all the time, but nobody ever really defines it. This was a wonderful definition of that and I appreciated knowing a bit more. So thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I think that this is an important historical moment. We have the opportunity as elected officials in local government at a difficult time to choose who we want to be and what direction our city is going to take. I know that the murder of George Floyd has helped to turn our focus to the systemic racism that has plagued our communities for far too long. And I feel strongly that our city's responsibility is to, with the help of our police department, to provide a safe and equitable place to live. We do that by building trust, accountability and striving constantly to improve. So that means taking steps like this. The partnership with the NAACP is something that I really applaud Chief Toronto for seeking out. We need to find ways like this to build trust between our police force and all people in Warrenville. This plan calls on all of us to openly reject all forms of discrimination, to embrace diversity and to strive to show all people respect and equality. I hope that this is not the end of the conversation, but just part of our everyday work and training going forward. We have this opportunity to do better every day to provide the fair and just community that we know our residents deserve. So thank you, Chief Toronto, and thank you, council, for supporting this resolution. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you for your comments. Alderman. Alderman Goodman. I mean Alderman Chrisell.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener.
Just like to say thanks to the chief for developing this measure and document. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
No comment.
Okay, we're ready for a roll call. Emily, please.
Alderman Berry. Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Motion carries and thank you again, Chief Toronto. This is terrific. We'll move on to item 7B. I don't believe we need a motion for that. We will have our city administrator Coakley introduce the subject.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments to lead off here and then I'll turn it over to our finance director to fill in the details as always. You'll see the attached chart or spreadsheet, I should say, with the various numbers. There's the memo that explains some of the context from both the finance director and from me. A couple of things, though, you'll notice that there is a slightly less bad picture for the general fund projections. They're a little bit less. We have a little bit more revenue than we thought we were. We're going to lose a little bit less than we were projecting than we thought. However, it's still not a good picture. And there is a difference. We'll be working on this for the next report. Kevin and I were speaking about this this afternoon. We're showing on that spreadsheet all of the market-based revenues that change because of the economy. They're really impacted by the economy. You'll notice property taxes not on there because that doesn't change much. Takes years to have a difference in, in property taxes. If it's going to decline, it almost never does. But these are the fluctuating ones like sales tax, food and beverage tax, et cetera. Now those show more than a 22% decrease, although the overall decrease for the general fund is just over 11% total. Now that's a big hint to the general fund, but it's not quite as dire as what's shown. There, the, the other funds that are shown, the motor fuel tax, the CMRP, et cetera, hotel motel, hotel tax fund, show much larger decreases. When you look at this spreadsheet, hotel tax, for example, has shown a 75% decrease. I want to remind everyone, council's well aware of this, but even the public, that we use the hotel taxes to also help support other funds. It's a revenue source and through an inter-fund loan and transfer, not loan, sorry, transfer to the capital maintenance replacement plan, to the general fund, for example. So that is going to have some long-lasting effects. As soon as, we're hoping that hotels will start to recover in a year or two so that we can start regaining those revenues. But that has a much broader impact from the hotel tax fund than just in the hotel taxes that fund itself and the tourism and grants. Some of the other things, we're still working on identifying additional cost cutting. You've seen those things from before the budget was even adopted for the capital maintenance replacement fund primarily. We've also cut some expenses in the general fund. The biggest expense category though in the general fund is personnel. It's just slightly, makes up just 69%, just under 70%. And the general fund is personnel costs. So to try to maintain the same service levels, we have to target that area. That's why there's a, the council has given the okay to go ahead and work on a pay freeze and control those personnel costs this year. As you may recall, we're still negotiating with the three city unions about that very fact, but there was a pay freeze in place for the non-union employees already. Finally, I will note, one correction, we had inaccurately listed CoffeeCon as being canceled. As you'll see on the agenda, it is not being, well, they're proposing not to have it canceled. So that is not going to be a savings of $25,000. It's not a large amount compared to all the others. But I want to make sure you realize that when we put this memo out, we were under the impression it was being canceled and then we are corrected. So we'll make that adjustment in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kevin Dollstrand, our finance director, things to add to this conversation?
Thank you, Mayor. The administrator got most of it. I'm just going to make a few notes. In the hotel, in the motor fuel tax fund, I had been noting that we have been working with the state to resolve an issue where we were receiving paper checks versus ACH deposits for our monthly allocations. The, the thing in and of itself is not particularly important, other than it allows us to receive the funds considerably quicker when it's done by ACH. After this was reported, was repaired or prepared, we do believe we have that situation corrected. We have now returned ACH deposit into that MFT fund. So that will speed up the amount of money, or speed up the timing of the money into that fund as well. You'll note in there that we did adjust the hotel, hotel tax fund considerably from where we had been prior. We used some more up-to-date information as well as the information that was shared by DuPage County Visitors Bureau Executive Director Beth Marquette. So we have revised that down considerably. And finally, we will be making additional adjustments to the income tax revenue we get shared by the state. We received an allocation right as this report was being prepared. There was not enough time to adjust the projections going forward. So on our next report, we will make sure that those do get adjusted to better reflect what's happening with that source of income. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, John. Discussion by the Alderman. We'll go through the list again, beginning with Alderman Ashower.
No questions. Thank you for the thorough report.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
No comments. And also thank you for the report. It's quite informative. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Bavir.
No questions.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, I appreciate this so much as we think through almost every issue on the, on our agendas. And it's always going to be fiscal year, right? It's not going to ever be year end, right? We're talking about the end of April, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I appreciate the detail in this. I, I'm very glad that there's a couple of areas where things are on track to be about what we estimated or in the home rule, sales tax receipts actually were a little bit above what we estimated in a couple of cases. I think that that's, you know, slightly encouraging, but my question is about the projection that you've used for A, B, C, and D, pretty much everything that goes into the general fund for the final six months of fiscal 2021. Because in some cases, those are, you know, a projection that's substantially higher than what we're currently seeing. And I know that that feels like a long way off and things have been changing so quickly that it's a very hard thing to predict. The 82, 82, 85%, I'm just wondering.
Sorry, I didn't hear all of that, so.
I think we got, we lost Alderman Goodman there. Alderman Goodman, are you back?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. I just, I wanted to know. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. I just, I wanted to know, my question was about the chart that had projections for the final six months of fiscal year 2021, and how in some cases, those are, you know, substantial jump up from the numbers that we're projecting for the first six months. And I just wondered where those numbers were coming from, because, you know, in many cases, we're seeing numbers about 60, 65, or projecting 65, but then for the final six months, our estimate now is 82, 85%. And I wanted to know if Finance Director Dollstrand could tell me where the projection was coming from.
Okay, Kevin?
Sure. Those came from our original projections when we started this. The administrator and I regularly go over these figures to try to re-predict and re-project where we'll be. May they be too high? At this point, we're not sure. Our original idea was that the, we would see more recovery than we've seen up to this point. We will, he and I will actually be having a meeting on Wednesday, where we'll be discussing these numbers a little more, and we'll determine if any of those need to be adjusted downward. It's a little hard to tell right now where those will be. And remember that that is an average for those last six months. We will review those, and we'll make any adjustments that we feel may be warranted as the situation changes.
Okay. And my last question had to do with a point that was made a minute ago about how the Hotel Motel Fund is a source of revenue for some of the other funds. Given the current outstanding balance of the Hotel Motel Fund, about how long do you think we have before we're really not gonna be able to meet some of those financial demands on the Hotel Motel Fund to pay for things in other funds?
So that is not, that is not an answer I can provide immediately. I will be able to provide that, as we're actually working on reviewing a draft of the audit for 2020, and we'll build those projections in, and we'll be able to provide a figure with our next update.
Okay, thank you. That would be great. I know that we're all talking about long-term, and it's very hard to predict things right now, because everything is so uncertain. So I appreciate you're trying to put some numbers on this, and thanks for the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the past, I appreciate the level of detail here. I always, every time I get these updates, I thumb quickly to the last line there, the M, and kind of gauge where we're at, and then go look at the details. But it paints a good picture, and I appreciate, appreciate all the detail here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Thank you for the detail. I appreciate the information.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
I too. Thank you for all this information. It's something we have to live with and have to work on, so. But at least it keeps us up to date on where we are, so that we can look favorably, hopefully, upon where we will be. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments, and thank you, staff, for, again, a thorough report. Any additional comments? Please identify yourself and speak up. Otherwise, we'll move on to item 7C. And if someone would like to make that motion, we could discuss that item.
Alderman Berry, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Tourism and Arts Commission recommendation and approve the amendment to the FY 2021 Hotel Tax Grant in the amount of $25,000 for the CoffeeCon event.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And to introduce this subject, could we have our assistant city administrator, Christina White?
Thank you, Mayor. As John mentioned earlier in the meeting, there was an email that went out. Mental information. I will attempt to summarize what was included in that email for anyone that didn't have a chance to read it. In that email was the, a copy of the CoffeeCon original grant application for fiscal year 21, and a copy of the city's hotel tax grant policy. CoffeeCon was an approved event for fiscal year 21, initially with the intent of it being a live event. Because of COVID, it's no longer possible for them to have that in-person CoffeeCon event. So the applicant has requested that the city consider allowing CoffeeCon to be modified to a one-day virtual event this year. The revised request does significantly change the original application and the approved list of expenses. All of the new expenses, which are included in the backup material today, are related to production and video crews to film the virtual event, equipment rentals, and advertising for a virtual conference-style event. Approval of this event would be a departure from the city's normal grant program and the intent of the grant program, because obviously, when the grant program was created, there was not a virtual event platform sort of intended. Most of those events are intended to bring in tourism and arts into the community, and it's unlikely in a virtual platform that we'll see a whole lot of, or any hotel stays or tourism in Warrenville this year. However, the event's continuity and its consistency within Warrenville, if it continues to be hosted in Warrenville, may have an increase in tourism in the future, year over year. Additionally, one of the things the applicant has included in their letter to the city is the intent to include some promotional videos that would broadcast between segments of their CoffeeCon event, which would offer an opportunity to highlight Warrenville to a broader audience. Finally, I just want to also add, this item was placed on the agenda with very short notice, which is not something that we normally do. But because of the applicant's desire to make a decision as to whether they can continue with their planning for a virtual event, it was reviewed by TAC on Thursday, and we tried to add it to the agenda so that we could provide them with that decision as to whether or not the city would allow them to use grant funds for this event. With that said, Patricia Senate is on the phone this evening with us, to help answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Christina. Just a clarification, the $25,000 is not an additional $25,000. It is the amount that was originally allocated for this event in the TAC grant, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And let's do this. Let's go through the Alderman and see if there are any questions for Pat before we get her online. And if not, then she can relax. Alderman Ashauer?
Yes, I'd just like to say that this is a unusual format. You know, it's gonna be hard to see what value it gives us, but it is an opportunity during a tough time to promote Warrenville, which is something that they've included in there, and I think will be valuable to the community in general going forward.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes. On Thursday evening, there was a very long discussion about this, and a lot of questions for both Pat and Kevin Senate. I know that they're trying to put this together.
Is everyone muted besides Alderman Berry? We're having trouble getting Alderman Berry. Alderman, could you start again, please?
Is that better?
You are not coming through. There's some background noise from somewhere.
Fred, could you mute yourself?
Okay, is it better? Can you hear me now?
There we go. Very good. Go ahead, Alderman.
I'm sorry. We did have this meeting, since I'm the representative, we did have the meeting on Thursday evening. There were a lot of questions that were answered by Pat and Kevin Senate regarding this event. There was a long discussion. They answered all of our questions with a lot of knowledge. We are happy that they are going to be promoting the city of Warrenville through the segments that they're doing in between these interviews that they have set up with the professional coffee people. And they, this event is also going to be on YouTube, and it's not just a six-hour event. This is an event that will go on, on, and on. So if anyone actually misses that day, they will be able to participate or actually view on YouTube at any time. And that's what we really liked about it. They're also going to be doing a lot of advertising in advance, a lot on Facebook, and that costs money for them also. So this is something that they've really thought about. They have professional people that are doing the work for them. That's why you see directors and producers and a lot of different professional-type panels that are in the business. So this will be done very well. And I think it will eventually be something that Warrenville will be proud of. So the, just so that you know, that every single TAC member was in favor of allowing them to do this. And, and this is something, too, that we have to remember. I did mention at the workshop that night, that, you know, they all have to think outside the box. And this is what CoffeeCon has done this year already. They're not looking to next year. They're actually trying to do it this year and see what they can, even if they do it this year, and it's, and they get their six hours in, maybe it's done differently again next year, but at least they're trying to do it this year, and they're thinking outside the box, which is really what we, what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir?
No questions. I'm in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Well, this is exactly what I was talking about a couple weeks ago, about with COVID, the need to, for all of us, for, for businesses, and then the city, and churches, and schools, and baseball teams, everybody has to think outside the box. And I was anxious that we would do something in Warrenville like this. So I think this is just a wonderfully creative idea. I have a lot of people that I've always contacted about CoffeeCon around DuPage County and in other states. And so I am thrilled with the idea that we will have these, what do they call them, bumpers in the middle, where, I mean, I think Mayor Brumford can go around and talk in front of buildings or hotels, and, and it's a wonderful way to promote our community, and so unique. And the whole topic about coffee, I'm not gonna say it ever like this, but the whole topic of coffee is just, people just love it. And a lot of people love it in different ways. And there's gonna be a way to buy a tasting, and I'm very creative. So I'm thanking the Senate, as well as anybody that has anything to do with this, and I appreciate TAC drilling down deep, so that we know that's been done, and questions have been answered. Because I think, I think this is great. I think we should all be thinking like this, and I just think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I would, I would say two things. First of all, if Kevin Senate is on, I would ask if there was anything that they wanted to say. And secondly, my question is that, since we do want to tie the TAC grant funding to promotion of hotel tourism, is there any way we can get some assurance from the Senate that if they have CoffeeCon again next year, they'll bring it back to Warrenville?
Okay, we'll save that question for Pat. Anything else, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
Yeah, so Alderman Berry had mentioned that it would be a recording, right? I see in the backup material that it would be a streaming live event on Facebook and YouTube. If it's not recorded, I guess that's my concern, is if you miss it, then it kind of negates the purpose of tourism and arts, right? Because if you didn't see it, and you're not visiting hotels, and you're not spending money in Warrenville, that's my only concern. So I would just ask for some clarification on, on the recording, where it would be hosted? Would it be under, is there some kind of CoffeeCon account that it would be found under? Would it be under the city of Warrenville's YouTube page, or how would people find it, I guess? And then I agree that, you know, necessity breeds innovation, and I applaud the, the effort of thinking outside the box here. I think it's a good idea. I just, I'm just wanted that question answered, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll pass that along. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great way to promote the city of Warrenville and recognize our unique attributes. I just wonder how this might benefit the residents, and whether they would be free to attend, or how they would gain access to the, to the programs that are gonna be offered by CoffeeCon. And then I have a question about the production and video crews, whether they're local, or whether they're from out of state, or where, you know, what their, the company names are, and where they're being hired from. Thank you.
Okay. And Alderman Wilson?
No comment.
All right. Pat Senate, sounds to me like we have several questions. If you're still there and available, would you like to speak up and help answer those?
There we go.
Okay, and then turn on camera.
Now, that sounds like Kevin.
Yes, Kevin's here, too.
All right, either one of you is welcome. Okay, do you remember the questions that were asked?
Okay.
I think we're pretty good on those. The first question, well, first of all, let me talk about how we will view it.
Or how it will be recorded.
Yeah, it'll be recorded. It'll be recorded. It will be, and, and it will be definitely played. It'll get a permanent home on YouTube, for one thing. And the other thing is, we have other outlets. It'll be live on Facebook. And I understand you're talking about recording, but it will also be probably at our website available, but it'll probably be the YouTube version.
It will, it will be at our Facebook page. Right now, if you go to CoffeeCon, there currently resides, Kevin does a weekly show, and his show is recorded and housed there at the CoffeeCon Facebook page. And the same thing goes for, the recording will be shared to YouTube, where it will also, from there, it can be shared any number of places. It can be shared to the city website, wherever you want to share it. But it will be, it will reside in both places, the CoffeeCon Facebook page and the CoffeeCon YouTube page.
Great. Okay. What about the question of asking whether or not you're gonna commit to stay in Warrenville indefinitely?
We believe Warrenville's our home.
Yeah.
Mayor, we've, we've been to, we've been to a lot of cities, and when we finally, in terms of when we're here in Illinois, we want it to be Warrenville. We, we realize that that's where our support is, and our home is, and it's, it hasn't been a problem at all for people from the city of Chicago or the surrounding states to come out to Warrenville to attend the event. So it's my intention to, yes, apply for the grant for the 2021, the new one coming up in September, so that, looking at it as an ongoing feature of Warrenville.
Great. Thank you, Pat. In terms of specific benefits for our residents in Warrenville, do you have any plans there?
Well, first of all, every, any one, let me, let me make that a little bigger. One of the reasons we want to do it this way, we're not charging. This is the first Warrenville event that we ever had, that was free to everyone in the world. And the reason is because, I mean, COVID's affected us, too. Everyone is, I mean, I think it's gotta be a response that, I consider this almost an emergency time. I guess I, I'm a media historian, and I like to think of World War II, and it's heroic things that, that people did, you know, to, for instance, going and entertaining the troops and things like that. I definitely think that we are, we want to provide this to everyone in the world. The only thing that's going to be not provided automatically is going to be samples that people can get. And as we were, we mentioned, someone, one of the Alderman mentioned, was we are, we are planning to make a kit that we can send out to people. I can't afford to do that for free, but everything else, the idea is you can put it in any other part of the show, see anything, and that's in perpetuity, because after all, we're gonna locate it on YouTube afterwards. So as far as the residents go, I'm going to be doing a series of tapes in Warrenville. And yeah, I want the locations to be kind of centered closer, probably make sure I got my, more than my share of backdrops with the hotels. But I also want to But I also want to ask people who are citizens of Warrenville, in majority of answering the questions, and one of them is, for instance, describe your, what's your first cup of coffee? What's your earliest memory of coffee? These are, have to be related to coffee, but they're certainly going to give citizens of Warrenville a chance for, for airtime, camera time. Meanwhile, again, they'll see their town. It's kind of cool to me to imagine that we're, there's a spoke of a wheel, and I've got, let's see, I've got a, one of our tasting experts is in the Bay Area, of the, we have a latte art expert that, she's in, in LA. We've got a New Orleans expert, a Turkish coffee expert, New Orleans, Turgay, and, and for sure, and we got a Seattle expert, and probably a Boston expert. I'm not sure about the additional one, we're going to have to find a sponsor for him, but that would be the idea. But all these, and they're all coming through Warrenville. It's Warrenville, Boston, Seattle, LA, and I like that. I kind of think that's cool, and I think the residents will get a pride, justifiably. This, we have a pretty hip audience. I realize I may not be that hip, but my audience is. And they're younger people, we skew younger, we skew young families. I think it's a very current thing, and it's, it's just a giant phenomenon in the country. We're just, I'm just lucky. And I'm lucky about one other thing, too. I'm lucky that before I started writing about coffee, my background is media, so none of this is, is new for me. I was thinking about this, I did my first satellite video in 1979. I did a video with, who's the efficiency expert? I mentioned him earlier. I can't remember his name now, but the, Peter Drucker. And we did a thing where Peter Drucker was in LA, and we brought him into El Crow Village via satellite. The camera's a lot smaller now, but this is so cool for us. And, oh, the other question you asked was about crews. Yeah, my, the director that we're going to bring in lives in Aurora. I can't get any closer than that. I have a camera person I'm going to be working with who's in, well, he's in Naperville, he's right down, right on the other side of the highway, and we have, and our-
It's our programmer.
Programmer is, is in Westmod or something like that. They're all west suburb people. I don't have any problem with people in Warrenville, but that's the crews that I know, and these are all, all the crews, obviously, in the Bay Area, every one of our locations has a crew that's going to be local to them.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin and Pat. I think we've covered those questions. We'll go back to the alderman just one more time to see if there are any redirects. Alderman Ashauer?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Berry? We'll come back to Alderman Berry. Alderman Bavir?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
No, I'm excited. Wondering which weekend in October, but no other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Goodman?
No questions.
Thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Widener?
No other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
No questions.
Very good. Back to Alderman Berry?
I'm reconnected. No questions. No questions. Thank you.
All right. Very good. And thank you, Kevin and Pat, for answering the questions and being with us tonight. All that remains is a roll call. We have a motion and a second. Emily, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. So Kevin and Pat, you've got substantial support from your community here. Good luck. We hope everything works out as well as you hope it will, and this is the first of many successful CoffeeCons going forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You do a lot.
Mayor, this is Christina. Can I add another comment before this and a thing up? We will be, I will be working with the city attorney to draft the letter to them with the conditions to make sure it meets all of the requirements of not only the city's policies, but any legalities in terms of how the funds can be used since it is grant funding. So Pat, I will get that letter to you, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, with any other details that you may need.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay. I think we're about to wrap up. We have nothing under unfinished business for this evening. We have no new business that's been identified for discussion. We don't have a need for a closed session. We do, however, have one last motion that's required, a motion to adjourn.
Alderman Kreschel, I move to adjourn.
Alderman Wilson?
Ashauer? Aye.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll do our final roll call. Emily, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry? Alderman Berry, to adjourn.
Looks to me like she waving her hand saying, yes, I'm ready to adjourn, but I can't speak. There we go. I will, go ahead.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned, and thank you also for your patience early on in the meeting when we had technical difficulties. Every week, they do this. We seem to have some challenge of some sort, but we're working through them as best we can, and hopefully, things will get smoother in the future. Good night, and thank you for your attention.